For April the eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. And, Mr. City Manager, do you have any comments on the council-sponsored item for this evening?
I can just provide you a brief overview of that item if you would like.
Sure.
And then, I don't know if Councilmember Hobart's able to join us tonight or not.
No reason.
So, Councilmember Hobart, as the item says, sponsored this item. Specifically, if this were to be moved forward to the next council meeting and then adopted by the council, it would take the city's current balance that has been received in the opioid settlement cases and allocate it toward the Arch Fund. That is approximately the amount, somewhat coincidental, that is needed to sustain and fund the program for this upcoming fiscal year. As you heard Battalion Chief Burrell in his presentation a few weeks ago mention, some of the initial grant funds are expiring. So, this would be funding that would sustain it for an additional year if it was the council's prerogative. We'll mention that it was continued a few meetings ago to the April fifteenth meeting, Councilmember McCandless's item, that also deals with the opioid monies as well. So, that's kind of a brief summary and overview. We can do our best to answer questions, but of course want to leave room for the council conversation as well.
So, there's no formal presentation, in other words, it's council-sponsored item and just we can have a discussion about it?
Correct.
Perfect. Any?
Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion from members of the body?
Mr. Mayor. I, Mr. Covert, I know that this, those settlement funds can only use, be used for certain things. Would using it for the Arch program fall under that?
Yes, it would. We've already looked at that and, and the restrictions are fairly big. I mean, so yes, there are restrictions on these funds and, and generally they're for health-related purposes and things like that. They don't, certainly don't get into really specific line items or anything like that. So, yes, these funds would be available for that use if that's how you want to spend them.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, I'm, I really like this program, but has there ever been any discussion of expanding it? I mean, because right now we just run it eight to five, Monday through Friday, essentially. Is that correct?
Yes, that's the, the funding available right now allows us to run it for the hours and dates that you're, that you just said, Monday through Friday, essentially during normal business hours.
Okay. Well, I don't have a huge objection for using it for that. I just, I would like us to find even more funding to have it expanded because, as we all know, crises and the situation don't happen during business hours. So, even maybe like an on-call situation or something would be nice.
Certainly. And it would probably be helpful, we'll do this for the council too, but to illustrate how this is able to work somewhat hand-in-glove with the co-responders program that's funded through the Federal Bureau of Justice and administered by the Police Department. I don't know why I pointed at you. But we, we will show what that relationship looks like as well. But yes, point well taken on, on those hours as well.
That's all I have right now. Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Question for the City Manager.
Sure.
Mr. Walker, would this, would this normally be part of the operating budget that you're getting, that you're going to be presenting? Or is this, I mean, would, would essentially if we do this, would that then essentially take it out of the operating budget for that purpose or, or not?
So, right now, as we're finalizing our budget deliberations and finishing the proposal that we will submit to the council, we're really faced with, with two decision points right now. To Councilmember Stewart's question, there, there was a budget request submitted by the Fire and Health Department to add additional personnel and expand the offerings of the program. The other issue we're facing, as I mentioned a moment ago, is the expiration of the original grant that was used to fund this program. So, are we going to allocate, you know, current general fund revenues or other special funds to sustain the program? If this resolution were to be passed, it would state, use these monies for this upcoming fiscal year to sustain the program at its current level and essentially buy another year of service while we deliberate, you know, future sustainable funding options.
Okay. All right, thank you. And one question relative to the program, is there, per, you know, along the lines of Councilmember Stewart's question, is there any way to, you know, change schedules or anything in so that, that we could, with the same level of personnel, cover more hours, you know, in the day?
Let me, let me speak with the Battalion Chief, Mr. Burrell, as well as our Health Director and see, I, I'm not quite familiar, as we sit here, with what all of the restrictions on scheduling are, but let me see what kind of flexibility might exist. And I can certainly report that back along with the co-responder information that I mentioned a moment ago.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have a further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Mr. Walker, I'm relatively new when it comes to budgets, so is it normal for the council to tell you how to spend a budget? Or is it normal that they make a recommendation and then you look at the budget and come back? I just, I've not been part of the conversation before, so still learning.
There has been different paths followed by different members and in different fiscal Their resolutions have been passed in the past by members of, by the council that were sponsored by members that requested funding to be allocated for specific programs. I don't know offhand that I've seen a specific dollar amount mentioned before, but usually it was more of a, you know, fund this program, fund this service, you know, this outcome, whatever that may be. The other fairly typical play I've seen is after the budget has been submitted, amendments offered by the council to redirect funds toward another program or priority. So, those are kind of the front and back-end ways I have seen the council put their thumb prints on the budget.
Okay. And then, just to follow up on a previous question, is about coordination between the first responders on the police side and on the fire side? I wouldn't be surprised if phone calls get made sometimes to one and sometimes to another. How do those two programs mesh? Are we using shared social workers so that you have crossover between the departments? Or do they have a shared communication system? I'm just trying to make sure that we aren't creating duplicate systems to solve single problems.
Fair question. And I think if we could, I, I think bringing this back to a study session very soon would be apropos so the council can further understand that, particularly as we head into the throes of the budget conversation.
Because I know we're going to have complicated budget discussions. I want to be sure that we're using those dollars wisely. I had brought forward a previous proposal, and I know that Councilmember Hobart suggested that we expand the time for that opioid council to make their citizens' council, excuse me, to make their recommendations. Really, I had envisioned that not that they would make funding recommendations, but more that they would help set the objectives and principles for how we use those opioid settlement funds. I think Arch program is one piece of treating a very complex problem. That's kind of front-end person on the street gets connected into services, but the questions are what happens to them afterwards? What is the treatment program? What's the wraparound? What's the coordination so that they're not just back there tomorrow to meet with the same, same staff? So, I, I would make the proposal that the Citizens Commission be able to have a limited amount of time to be able to come up with objectives and principles for the long-term management of these dollars. While we're faced with budgetary issues right this minute, these are dollars that are going to come in over time. We have the possibility that we could get substantial dollars in the future because there are still unsettled lawsuits. And I would like for us to have a really thoughtful proposal that we can go forward with that.
And to your point, Councilmember, we know for certain, as the courts have ruled, that we still have a one-point-five-million-dollar payment coming our way, but that will come in over a period of many years and not all in one fell swoop. So, I would encourage the council as you're having these deliberations to consider it through that lens of, these dollars will come in drips and drabs and unpredictable amounts and not necessarily in one big windfall or in predictable amounts every year.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Along with Councilwoman McCandless understanding that this was done carefully and thoughtfully, the Advisory Board of Health gave us the recommendation that we asked them to take a look at what can be used with, with this funding source. So, they gave us back a recommendation to help this funding source, at least for the next year, specifically, they said, two years, to help us work through maybe a more determined funding source.
The Board of Health recommended that at least two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year be set aside for the Arch program over each of the next two years.
Is that for, what is the, the budgetary breakdown of that? Do you know, itemized?
From the, the Board's recommendation?
Yes.
It primarily, as with all of our services here at the city, those are salary and benefit expenditures for the men and women who are providing the service. There are some operating expenses, for example, the Arch vehicle that you've seen, you know, maintenance and operation of that, but primarily it's for the personnel who are providing the service day-to-day.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Anyone else other further discussion? Seeing none? Okay, that'll take us from this item. You know, bring us to, if I'm correct, Mr. City Manager, the citizens' survey, if I'm correct.
Yes, sir, you're correct, and...
I'm sorry, Mayor, did you give an opportunity for citizen requests on this item?
Oh, thank you.
We did, but we didn't receive any, so...
Okay.
But we didn't receive any, did we?
We didn't receive any.
Okay. So, that's why I skipped that portion of it.
Okay, got it.
Signed up to speed.
I missed that, thank you.
No worries. But thank you, that's a good clarification. With that, Mr. City Manager, would you like to give kind of an overview of the survey, citizens' survey?
Just very quickly, I will remind the council that the Citizen Satisfaction Survey was an item that you approved funding for last year. We contracted with the firm that we have used the last several iterations of this, ETC Institute, and Jason from the Institute is here tonight to provide you with a summary overview of the results that we found, so I will yield to you.
Great, thanks. Good evening. My name's Jason Marado. I'm with ETC Institute, and we're a marketing and research firm that specializes in conducting community surveys for local governments. And we just finished once again conducting a community survey for the City of Independence. So, today I'm going to walk through the key findings from the survey. Just a little background about ETC. We're based in Olathe, but we're a national leader in providing market research for local governments. We've been doing this type of work for over forty years, and in the last ten years alone, we've conducted surveys in more than a thousand communities across the country, including over thirty cities in the Kansas City metro area. So, this is the type of work that we specialize in. So, there are several reasons to conduct a survey like this. One is to get an objective assessment of how satisfied residents are with major city services and to determine what residents feel are the top priorities for the city. We're also able to measure trends from your previous surveys. It's been five years since your last survey, so it's been a while, but we're still able to compare these results to previous years. And then, we're also able to compare your results with other communities across the country where we ask some of these same questions. So, a little background about the survey. The survey was seven pages in length. It's kind of a longer survey, but a pretty typical length for this type of city-wide community survey. The survey was administered by a combination of mail and online to randomly selected residents throughout the city, and that mail-online combination is our standard methodology for these types of surveys. We received six-hundred-and-two completed surveys. Our goal was six-hundred, so we accomplished that. And the results of these six-hundred-and-two surveys at the ninety-five-percent level of confidence has a margin of error plus or minus four percent. Essentially, that means that if we conducted this survey the same way a hundred times, ninety-five times the results would be plus or minus four percent from what we reported. So, the results are never perfect, even for a statistically valid survey, but the margin of error is small. So, here we have a map of the city. The red dots are households that completed the survey, so we had a good distribution throughout the city. The areas that are more populated are the areas where we had the most responses, which is what you want for a random sample survey. And this distribution is similar to what we've seen in previous surveys. And as we were administering the survey, we made sure that the demographics of survey respondents reflect the actual population of the city. So, we especially pay attention to key demographic areas such as age, race, ethnicity, gender, and household income. So, here's what we found from the survey. We found that customer service provided by city employees rates ten percentage points above the U.S. average, so much better than most other cities. The top overall priorities for city services are maintaining city streets, enforcing codes and ordinances, police services, city electric utilities, and traffic flow. And then, we asked residents, what are the reasons that will have the biggest impact on deciding to stay in the city for the next ten years? And the top reasons were affordable housing, living near family and friends, and then access to a variety of shopping and entertainment options. So, now we'll take a look at overall satisfaction with city services. This was the first question on the survey. We asked residents how satisfied they are with these major categories of city services. Here, we're asking residents to rate these areas at the big-picture departmental level, and then later on in the survey, we asked about some specific areas within some of these categories. So, you can see that the dark blue ratings are very satisfied, light blue is satisfied, the gray is neutral, and we interpret neutral as average or meeting expectations, so rating of a three on a five-point scale. So, it's not a bad rating, but not as positive as the blue. And then, the pink are those who are dissatisfied or very dissatisfied. So, overall, the positive ratings outweigh the negative. The highest rated areas were fire services, water, sanitary, and stormwater management, police services, electric utilities, parks and recreation, and customer service. There are only two areas that had more, more dissatisfied residents than satisfied, and that was enforcing codes and ordinances and then maintaining city streets. So, we also compared these results to your last survey, which was in two thousand and eighteen. Overall, the satisfaction ratings are down a little bit from two thousand and eighteen, but that's a trend we've seen all over the country, so that's not a surprise. Now, here are the areas with the biggest, among the biggest increases and decreases in satisfaction since two thousand and eighteen. So, some of the biggest increases included city electric utilities, access to elected and appointed officials, food safety standards at city restaurants, overall quality of fire protection, and then water pressure in homes. Some of the bigger decreases in satisfaction since two thousand and eighteen were maintaining major city streets, maintaining neighborhood residential streets, maintaining city buildings, enforcing traffic laws, and then a police presence in commercial areas. So, we also cared, compared results for your, with your survey with other communities. Now, for this question, the dark blue are Independence residents who are either very satisfied or satisfied. The light blue are the satisfaction ratings in the Plains region, so that includes the state of Missouri as well as some surrounding states. And then, the gray are the satisfaction ratings for residents from all across the country. And this is based on a national survey that ETC Institute conducts every one to two years with randomly selected residents across the country. So, for some of these categories, your ratings are similar to other cities. Police is a little bit higher than the regional and national average. Parks, traffic flow, and communication are similar. The two areas that are rated significantly higher than other communities are fire services and then customer service from city employees. The only areas that are rated significantly lower are enforcing codes and ordinances and maintaining city streets. So, now we'll look at top priorities. We saw earlier how satisfied residents are with major categories of city services. As a follow-up question, we asked which of these services should receive the most emphasis from city leaders over the next two years? So, you can see the highest priority was city streets, second was police. The other highest priorities were codes and ordinances, electric utilities, and then traffic flow. So, this leads to something we call the important satisfaction rating. This analysis is based on two different sets of data, which we've seen both of those already. We first asked residents how satisfied they are with services. We then asked which are the most important for city leaders to emphasize. So, the idea behind this is that the areas that have a combination of low levels of satisfaction, but at the same time are the most important, should be the highest priorities to focus on. So, the highest priorities are the areas in pink, that's maintaining city streets, enforcing codes and ordinances. The next level of priority are in yellow, police services, electric utilities, and traffic flow. The areas in green are a bit of a lower priority, and it doesn't mean those areas are not important, but making improvements to areas in pink and yellow will impact the greatest number of residents. This is really a different way of looking at the same information. If you look at the top of this quadrant, those are the areas that have the highest satisfaction rating. And as you move down, the level of satisfaction gets less and less. If you start at the right-hand side, those are the areas that residents feel are the most important, and as you move left, the level of importance gets less and less. So, if you look at the bottom right-hand quadrant, where it says opportunities for improvement, those are the ones that have that combination of lower satisfaction but also high importance, so they should be the highest priorities. And you can see you have streets and codes and ordinances. This is the important satisfaction rating specifically for public safety services. You can see the top priorities are just overall efforts to prevent crime, and then police presence in neighborhoods. Other high priorities include access to mental health outreach services and programs, investigating criminal offenses, police presence in commercial areas, enforcing traffic laws, and then animal control services. So, we've got some other findings we looked at. Here, we asked respondents how much they agree with various statements related to Independence as a historic city, and you can see over ninety percent of respondents feel it's important to preserve the city's historic sites. Almost ninety percent say it's important to preserve historic neighborhoods and to maintain the character of the square. We asked respondents, what are the most important reasons that would impact your decision to stay in the City of Independence for the next ten years? The most important reasons were affordable housing, living near family and friends, having access to shopping and entertainment options, and then having a sense of community. We asked respondents which types of development they feel should receive the highest priorities for the city's long-range plan. You can see three of the six areas kind of stand out as the higher priorities. That's single-family residential development, the pace and quality of redevelopment, and then retail development. We asked respondents how much, whether they would support a general obligation bond to repair or replace these different items. You can see the highest priority was street repair and replacement. Other high priorities were repair and replace bridges and sidewalks to schools and sidewalks to parks. We asked respondents how satisfied they are with the overall quality of the Independence Event Center. You can see the results are very positive. Over seventy percent of respondents are either very satisfied or satisfied, compared to only five percent who are dissatisfied or very dissatisfied. We asked respondents where they currently get information about city programs, services, and events. You can see there are four main sources that residents use to get information about the city, and most of them are sources provided by the city, the city's social media, city's newsletter, the just local TV news, and then the city's website. As a follow-up question, we asked, what are your most preferred sources of getting information about the city? And the way residents most prefer to get information aligns with the way they are currently getting information. So, the most preferred sources are the city's newsletter, city's social media, city's websites. Those are the top three, and then fourth is TV news. So, just a quick recap, we saw that customer service provided by city employees rates much higher than the national average. The top overall priorities are streets, codes and ordinances, police services, electric utilities, and traffic flow. And then, the reasons that will have the biggest impact on residents staying in Independence for the next ten years are affordable housing, living near family and friends, and a sense of community, and then access to a variety of shopping and entertainment options. So, that's everything that I had. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Any questions? Any questions? Go ahead.
Question regarding, so you talked about that the fire and police services ranked higher, you know, than most other services at the city. Was there any indication as to why? Was there any follow-up questions regarding that?
Yeah, we did have a question that asked about more specific aspects of police and fire. We touched on it just a little bit with this chart here. There's a, there's a bar chart in the full report that shows us in a little easier way to read, but the third column here shows satisfaction. So, you can see the areas that residents were the most satisfied with. So, fire protection, how quickly fire respond to emergencies. For both of those, over eighty percent of respondents were satisfied. How quickly ambulances arrive at emergencies also rated high, almost a seventy-percent satisfaction rating. So, this question gets a little deeper into that.
In regards to, you know, the, those that ranked high versus those that ranked low, was there any comparison in terms of, you know, percentage of, you know, funding that we, you know, apply towards those, you know, those particular services?
We didn't ask questions about funding. These are just general perceptions of these services. The funding aspect really, really wasn't a part of, of the survey questions.
Okay. All right. And because my, my perspective would be, and I don't, you know, so help me understand if this is a reasonable conclusion to draw, and that would be is that, you know, we, police and fire are two of our highest-funded, you know, pieces of our budget. You know, the others, code enforcement, some of that is, is less, and so the question is, is it a reasonable inference to say that, you know, because we don't put as much funding towards those other items, that that's why they're not as well-received?
I would say that's definitely a possibility. Yeah, and these are residents' perceptions. There's just a perceptions, not necessarily reality, although it could be. So, there's a lot of possible reasons, but that's, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's reasonable.
Okay. All right. That's helpful. Thank you.
Anyone else have other questions or comments? This was a citizens' survey. Did it include anyone in the business community to see the satisfaction of business leaders working with the city?
This survey was only for residents. We do sometimes conduct business surveys, but typically the questions are a bit different, so that's a whole kind of separate survey. So, this one was focused only on residents.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all the, the work you did on that. I was reviewing this, spent most of the morning before I had to go stare at the sun and see what was taking place with that. So, about the same time, we were breaking down the, the specific statistics. So, we do have our work cut out for us, maintenance of city streets, code enforcement, infrastructure. Those seem to be the, the two reoccurring themes that, that we need to focus on, and this information gives the council good information to make policy decisions and budgetary decisions and give that direction coming up for the, for the budget. We really have dropped with our maintenance of city streets from two thousand and thirteen, forty percent high, to a two thousand and twenty-three to a nineteen percent low, if you will. And I think some of that could be, and I'm not passing buck or taking blame, but as, as economies slow down, inflation goes up, anything that is touched with oil and byproducts of oil goes tremendously high, given the, a good example of this year, we had to reduce our total lane miles for capital outlay by, what, fifty percent, Mr. City Manager? So, we weren't able to do as much because product costs more. So, we need to take those into account and definitely help us focus on that. Thank you for the information. Good stuff. I do have a question, Mr. City Manager, as I was going through this and Ashley Constention and I were talking today as we were discussing, and the thought was... and the thought was, is it, is it feasible, is it wise and prudent to do a study within different municipalities, within the plains reason on, on typical thought of Independence, what they think of Independence, work, live, and visit here? Is there any gems of information that we can glean from that? Doesn't have to be now or, or next week, but maybe something to think about to maybe cost share with our Chamber of Commerce to do a strategic study in, in some key demographics and surrounding municipalities?
Maybe if I'm understanding the, the business survey that Mr. Marado was speaking to, but what perceptions of, of Independence are in, in that environment along those lines? I, I think there's merit to that, particularly as you're building out the Little Blue Valley, the industrial development that we're seeing out there, the uptick in residential construction. I, I think understanding what people's viewpoint and, and what they're looking for and how we're measuring up particularly against our peers and folks we're competing for, for human and capital talent, yeah, I think there's some wisdom there.
Okay. Well, we can definitely keep that conversation going as time progresses with that. Thank you for the study.
Just to clarify, Mr. Perkins, the, are you talking about just the business side of that? Are you talking about, you know, like tourism side or as well, or, you know, from a?
It would be an all-encompassing ask.
Okay.
What, what is the basic perception of Independence? And I would say to their community, not to just their business community, but we can always find two of them. The thought was, what is the perception outside of Independence in reflection to Independence? Why would you want to come here? What would make you want to live here? What would you make you want to come and visit here? And those can have certainly the elements of tourism, because we can certainly find to our tourism aspects on how can we get people here to turn that dollar over several times.
Anyone else? Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, just, you know, you, you have a pie that is a certain size. It would be helpful to know what is surrounding communities, what percentage of their budget are they dedicating to streets, to sidewalks, to bridges, and infrastructure? I get it, different communities are different, but if, you know, if, if we're spending three percent and they're spending twenty percent, I think that gives us a perception of the degree of increase in funds we're going to need to be able to address that. I don't recall municipal services at some point said that if we continued to pave at the rate we're going, it would take us fifty years to be able to repave every street in Independence. Is that, do I remember that number correctly?
Twenty-seven years.
Twenty-seven?
But yes.
Okay. Pardon the exaggeration. So twenty-seven years if we keep up at the rate we're going. Okay. Thank you very much.
If I may ask the council just to keep things moving, with your indulgence, I would love to ask your management analysts to help with that comparison to the surrounding communities as a percent of their, their budget for some of these key services. If, if, if there's no objection to that, I'd certainly love to work with them to help pull that data. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Other discussion points? Perfect. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
If I can, following up on surveys, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir.
There's two things that I would like to consider, and I know Councilmember Perkins mentioned this to me, I think, last week when we had a discussion about working on an ombudsman for businesses. So it makes it easier for businesses to open businesses, to go through the process, things like that. We talked about that a little bit.
Yes, sir.
But also, what's your basic overall thoughts of surveying folks who have gone through the business licensing process? And how easy is it? Because a lot of people, I mean, there are, there are a number of people who have a business license here, and they do business here, they also do business elsewhere. And how is it easy? Is it, because if we bring in more businesses and it's easier to do business with us, we get more jobs here, we grow our economy, there's all kinds of things in that regard. So just wanted to kind of get your general thoughts on that. I'd like to, you know, kind of put out in front of everybody here to say, let's do something along that range, because I've had folks say, you know, sometimes it's not as easy as we'd like it to be to do business with the city of Independence, so.
Well, my, my quick feedback would be, I think it was around two thousand and twelve, the last time the management analyst looked at the business licensing permitting, plan review process. Excellent report written by a wise, dashing, handsome management analyst. So it's probably worth updating at this point. I think both talking to people who are currently in the process and maybe reaching out to those who recently went through the process would be helpful, and also trying to maybe get a broad range, because, you know, we deal with everything from international companies that have a fleet of development attorneys all the way down to a single individual who's trying to open, you know, a, a small business of some kind. So getting that broad range of perspective and both from people currently and who just went through the process, I, I think makes a lot of sense to help understand what that perception looks like and things we might be able to do to either improve our process or better communicate how our process works.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. To, to keep that moving, would that be something that our new, newly-formed Independence Partnership, Economic Partnership could, could help steer, drive, or facilitate, or part, cost share?
In, in terms of doing that kind of research and study? Yeah, I, you know, I think my recommendation would be to have some sort of live tracking mechanism for folks who've just gone through that plan review or permitting process and how did we do, right? I mean, we've all gone shopping or done business with somebody, and they provide you a customer survey. How was your experience? I, I think that makes sense to do here, too, because oftentimes perception becomes reality, and what people think of us is what they go tell their other friends in the business community. So I think using our friends at the partnership to help us do some sort of live surveying makes a lot of sense.
Okay. And I know Councilmember Perkins, you and I talked about that last week, and I'd love to work with you on that to help drive that forward. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for indulging that. Please proceed.
Mr. Walker, so you've received the results of your survey. What is your plan? Do you come back to us with these are recommendations for how we address streets, codes, et cetera?
Two immediate things the council will see both in, in May. One, the submitted budget, to the degree that resources allow it, are intended to allocate our budget to be responsive to the things we're hearing are priorities. Many of these things are resource issues, where we can allocate more resources to better aligning our services with the things the community is telling us are, are priorities. And as I've said often, a budget is, is a plan, and it's a reflection of community values. So trying to create more alignment between what the citizens are telling us as a priority and the budget is imperative. The other thing is the council's strategic planning session that has been scheduled for early May. I think that is a critical day and conversation for the council to have that conversation about what you're seeing in this survey, what kind of results you want to see, what things you want prioritized, and updating your action plan to reflect the feedback you're getting from your citizens.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Other discussions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for that. That brings us to staff reports on twenty-four zero twenty-eight and twenty-four zero twenty-nine, which we pulled off the agenda and then put on here to have reports. How are we going to receive that information, Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, be my recommendation with the council's indulgence, we have our project manager for this, Project Advocates here tonight. I would recommend taking both of these items concurrently. We have a brief presentation to just summarize the action contemplated by both of those ordinances, and then both the project manager as well as my staffs are ready to stand for any questions the council has to help you feel more comfortable voting on these items next week. So with your indulgence, I would ask Jennifer Gerlock from Project Advocates, who's the city's representative on these efforts, to come forward and share our presentation with you.
Okay.
I'm Jennifer Gerlock, and with Project Advocates. This is.
On this side. I moved over here.
You moved on me. And my partner Rad Way. We are the owner's representative that we are representing.
And, yeah, if you can pull the microphone closer or turn it up so that you can.
I'm tall, I'm sorry.
Right, you can adjust it right there at the end.
There we go. Is that better?
Perfect.
There we go. Jennifer Gerlock with Project Advocates, my partner Rad Way. We are an owners representative firm here to discuss the Justice Center project with you all. We can go through a couple slides here. It is information that was in the packet on Thursday, but we're happy to answer any questions. I, I think I'd kind of welcome a Q and A more to answer, make sure we've answered all So first off, this is the Hafer Welker, which we have Ken Hinton over here as well. He is the principal with Hafer Welker, who is the architecture firm that the selection committee had selected to be the architect of record for this project. As you see here, their contract is broken into four phases throughout this process. So the first one, Phase A, is really updating that master plan that was done quite a few years ago, and really doing a space needs assessment. That is the first thing we would kick off with. That would be, and we'll get into the details on the next phase, that first line item of cost that you see. The second phase is the Phase B, and that is doing your concept plans and your site plans. And really, we see that being processed through the end of the year that gets you to a point where then you have something to show the public for a geo bond next year. They're going to want to see something, and so this is what gets you to that level of a nice building, a site plan, details of how it's all going to lay out, and a budget that goes along with it. Phase C is the IUC building, the existing IUC building, and renovating that currently to house the new PD admin in that building. So that's going to go kind of concurrently with Phase B, just so we can keep those processes going. A big component of knowing what we need to do to the IUC is that concept plan. We don't want to duplicate services in, in either that building or the ones that we're going to be building in the future. And then Phase D, after Phase A through C are completed, we really dive into the details of, of designing that building, and that is your schematic drawings, it's all the way through your design documents, construction administration, and at that point, we would also bring on a contractor, so we'd be back for that as well. So those, those are the four phases, and as you'll see in the next slide, we've broken the pricing down. We've asked Hafer Welker to break it out through each phase, and the city's risk is really only as far as you take it. At any point, you can stop the project, you can pause if we need to, we can keep going forward at any point, and then they will bill on a monthly basis. So as they do the work, then they bill for that phase of work and the percentage complete of that phase. They don't just bill for all phase at one time. And that is very standard in the industry, and with the AIA contract, we're using a B-133. It's a very industry-standard contract that will really go nicely with the contractor's contract down the road. It limits the city's risk and liability on a lot of items, which is why we recommended going with that particular contract. And as I mentioned, that we can stop and pause at any time. Let me go into the next one here. This is a little small, but should be in your packet, should have been all part of their contract in there. You can see the colored line items are the different phases with the totals there of how it's broken down, and then their total contract at the bottom. Happy to go into any of those details on their contract before we go into the Project Advocates one as well.
Any questions?
It's hard to see that detail on there, and I can't really, is, are you breaking down the cost per phase?
The cost is broken down per phase, so each.
Since I can't read it and I can't, I don't have access to it, can you tell us what those are?
Sure. So Phase A, the total is a hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred dollars. Phase A is the updated master plan and space needs assessment. So that's updating from your last, I think it's four or five years ago, master plan. And then Phase B is the concept, design, and site plan, so getting us to that level where you could have a, something to show the public at the end of the year for the geo bond next year. That phase total is three hundred and thirteen thousand. Phase C, which is the basic design services for the IUC building, and that is three hundred and twelve thousand. And then the, the last component is the actual design of the new Justice Center complex, which is two million, six hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred dollars. For a total of three million, six hundred and sixty-five forty.
So my primary question then would be, would it be reasonable from your perspective that, that, you know, well, I mean, I can see the need for phases A, B, and C at the present, but for Phase D, you know, we, we really need to know if that geo bond is going to be successful. And so would it be reasonable from your perspective to delay the work of Phase D till after we, the citizens vote on the geo bond?
So the work of Phase D will not start until after the geo bond passes, and that work doesn't start unless we pass.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That is very helpful.
Yep. However, I will, I will go ahead and go back a little bit. So Phase A and Phase B and Phase C are really important in developing the plan of what's going to happen. So we want to make sure we have a cohesive team all the way through. So it would probably not be in your best interest to try to find an architect after the geo bond passes, do, you know, do all of this, the Phase A through C with one architect, and then go find a new one. You're going to have a lot of discrepancies in the design there, and it probably wouldn't be in your best interest to do that, which is why we would recommend picking Hafer Welker now to go through the process with you. Also, just like everything, prices are going up, so if we're able to lock in a company and a price now for services that will get you through the end of this multi-year project, that's also in your benefit.
Right. Okay. That's help, very helpful. Thank you.
Anyone else have other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
For somebody who's never built a building, they don't understand the role of the owner's rep, could you just talk about what that is? And then I'm going to kick a question to Mr. Walker, which is just to talk about where these funds would be pigeonholed to come from. So, thank you.
Absolutely. So I'm going to move on to this slide here, which is the Project Advocates breakdown of our services here, and I'll let Rad talk more on that as well, about what Project Advocates does and how it will benefit your, your city.
Yeah, so I'm Rad Way, principal owner of Project Advocates here in Kansas City area. And so our mission and really this definition of owner's representative is we stand in your shoes, representing the city and the various departments as we put a construction project together. So we are one hundred percent looking out for the owner's best interest, trying to get transparent information, communications, and really mitigate, manage any risks that come along with the projects. I've been in the construction business for forty-three years now, eight years as an owner's rep. We call it, we like to call it a trusted advisor, sounds a little bit better to me than owner's rep, but that's really our role, is to lead the team, help put the team together. So we sat in on the interviews for the architectural firms for both of these we're going to speak to tonight, and helped those selection committees or selection. and helped those selection committees or selection groups come to the best decision for that particular project, because they're all a little bit different. So we would also manage this project from when we started last fall, all the way through to completion of the building, what we call activation, which is the furniture and equipment and IT, everything. And when you occupy the building, we're still around to make sure everything's operating correctly, and you know, we get punch lists done and all the things that happen in construction. Does that help?
Yes, when, having worked with owners reps in the past, the other function is that you guys are really the fiscal watchdogs.
We are.
So when, when some of your folks come in and say, well, we're going to have a 50% cost overrun, they're like, hey, you know, there are different ways we could do that, we could make different decisions, we're going to preorder supplies, et cetera. And so you often pay for yourselves in managing the costs of what is a fluid process when designing and building a building. Thank you.
And I, I 100% agree with that, we do pay for our own fees in that management side. And one of our key objectives is always stewardship of the taxpayers' money, how we're looking out for that. We're reviewing Hafer Welker's pay applications, they're invoicing every month, making sure everything's correct. Once we have a contractor in board, we'll manage that whole construction cost process. And there's a, you know, fair amount of debate that goes along with that, and suggestions, and making sure we get the best value for every dollar we spend. So maybe you can, oh, go ahead.
Just to follow up on this process, so you know, we're talking about a justice center here, which would be a police, you know, have police facilities and, and, you know, it would be different than just building a, you know, a standard office building.
It's very different.
And so from your perspective, I guess, number one, do you have experience with that particular kind of industry, you know, building? And then number two, you know, can you speak anything to the kinds of differences that we're talking about from, you know, just a typical building construction?
Yeah, certainly can, so we have a lot of experience in what I call the public safety building side of things. Did a police headquarters for the city of Council Bluffs up in Iowa. Jennifer's currently working on two fire stations with the city of Shawnee. We've been hired by the city of Prairie Village for their new city hall complex. So considerable amount of that type of experience and understanding the language and what the real key priorities are in going through that. The biggest differences, I think, and Jennifer can speak to this also, are in security and understanding access and security and separation and how that all works, whether we're talking about a justice center or a fire station or a police headquarters, whatever it might be. Security is a real difference and a real priority to make sure that works out right. And also the technology side is always communication, announcements, alerting systems, those kind of things get relatively complicated, and a lot of integration with different services, different departments that go along with that. Those are, I think, kind of some of the key differences.
I agree. Some, some construction building types that are a little bit unique, especially on the Justice Center side, just for safety and number of people in a building, but really, security and technology are where we're going to see our biggest, biggest technical differences than just your office building.
Anything else? Yeah, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the detailed report. So a couple of questions, or one, the items identifying expenses from the public safety sales tax, PD requests from the Project Advocates, from the fire sales tax for ninety-three, nine hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars and some change, is set for next Monday's council meeting. Why does the total expenditure for all the projects, projects to projects advocates, and from what are the funding sources from?
I'll have Lisa Reynolds, if that's okay, answer from a staff perspective, yep.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Lisa Reynolds, Director of Municipal Services. So the funding for the item for PD for the nine hundred thousand, that one is from the public safety sales tax, and that one is only for the Justice Center complex. Okay, and then also on the fifteenth, there will be an item on the consent agenda for the fire station design. And then Project Advocates will also have their, their owners rep piece that night as well, and that's a different total funded from the fire sales tax. So all of, keeping all the buckets of money separate and funding the Justice Center out of public safety and use tax and funding fire, out of the fire sales tax.
Just want to get that clarified, that's a juggling act that we want to make sure we're juggling correctly.
It is, and just to clarify again, as, as both Jennifer and Rad have mentioned, this is a multi-year project. And so while we are appropriating all this money upfront, we will be invoiced as the project goes along. So it will take two to three years to spend the money we would be allocating in these agenda items.
So we're basically, sorry, so we're basically just kind of upfronting this and making sure it spans out.
We're appropriating the funds and then, yeah, it'll take years to spend the money as the, as the design concepts go, as the fire stations are built and the pieces come together.
Makes sense, and that's locked, that helps to lock in pricing, gets a set, because things are so goofy volatile, as we mentioned about oil-based products.
Anything else?
Okay, anything else? Anyone else, other questions, comments, concerns? Oh, yep.
You answered my question, which is where the money comes from, so thank you.
Perfect, thank you guys.
Anyone else other further discussion? Okay, perfect, thank you very much, thank you. And that was, was that, that was there, just want to make sure that that was twenty-four, oh, twenty-eight, right? And twenty-nine?
So that was the first part, I think they, they have a second presentation to correspond with the other item that's on your agenda.
That's what I was thinking, and that's what I wanted to make sure we had.
You were correct.
Yep, yep, it's, it's, I, I won't do this spiel about us again, because we're the same people for this project. But, so for the fire station projects, we have, the selection committee has selected WSKF Architects, and Dale Novak is over there as well, representing them. Again, it's a phased approach, so we're working through three fire stations, and they are not all going to be built on day one, so it's a phased approach. That first Phase A here is that concept design and programming. There's a lot of things that have changed in fire operations since the last fire station was built, so we're going to sit down with the fire department and the city and figure out what is, what's needed, what's new. There's a lot of new design for safety of the firemen as well, firemen and women, pardon me. And so that's that first phase, is figuring out what do these three buildings need to be, right sizing them, making sure that they fit on the, on the sites correctly for access for the fire trucks and for their operations. And then we'll dive into each station, so each station, eight with the indoor training facility would come first, then we have Station Eleven, and then Station Five. So again, those are phases, and at any given time, their contract is written exactly the same way. At any given time, we can pause, we can stop, we can terminate, we can restart as needed for each one. And just because you do Station Eight does not mean if you stop at eleven that you have to do eleven. You can, you know, these are all kind of independent to work through. It is one contract, again, for one architect. We do feel it's in the city's best interest to lock in one now. Also, as there's so many different concepts that are going to be changing in this concept design and programming about fire station operations, we want to make sure that we've got one cohesive design for all three of these stations that will be built relatively close together. And, yep, there's their breakdown here, again, it's kind of small, but Phase A, which is that concept design, programming is a hundred and sixty-three thousand. Phase B, which is Station Eight with the training facility, it's about double in size physically. What's been planned is eight hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then Phase C and Phase D, which are Stations Eleven and Five, are five hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-five each, for a total of two, two million, sixty-six thousand, three seventy-five. And then they did, we did also list off their, the rest of their design teams there as well. We have the same thing for Hafer Welker and the Justice Center, just a lot of stuff to put on paper that you can't read here, so. And again, there's the Project Advocates breakdown for this specific project. We do have ours as well broken out between the three stations, so you can, you can look in detail at those, but we did break them out so they correlate with each station. And I'm happy to answer any questions on those, if you have questions on the fire stations.
Any questions? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the master schedule provided by the Advocates indicate planning for the modifications to the IUC beginning on August first of 2024, and on, and end on December thirty-first, 2024, but no construction modifications to the IUC until April twenty-four, April fourteenth, 2025. You kind of know where I'm going?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I, if you're asking about schedule, there's not a formal schedule that's been published. There have been drafts kicked around, like, if in a perfect world, everything goes, if worst case scenario, everything goes, and those have been, you know, discussed, but there's not, it's a very fluid schedule at the moment. Everything hinges from a construction standpoint, obviously, on IUC being vacated, so we're working to do that as quickly as possible and to let PD move from across the street here into that facility as quickly as possible. And there can be some concurrent design going on. Obviously, the Hafer Welker can be in that building, looking around and doing conceptual layouts and design while it's occupied, but obviously, construction can't start until those pieces start to move. So to answer your question specifically about schedule, there's not one out there at the moment.
So there's really no way to accelerate this, this process and without reducing?
The best way probably to accelerate just, you know, timely communications on the parts of city staff, working with all the contractors, there's a lot of moving pieces on this, but just setting those deadlines upfront on expectations of when things are due back, getting everything through the processes as quickly as possible.
Yeah, I, I guess I would add to that, that Lisa's exactly right, that we will be putting together very detailed schedules for each one of the projects and how they all fit together, so we can look at that, kind of that phasing or concurrency that goes through each one of the projects. And then one of our other responsibilities, other than the fiscal side, is holding everybody accountable. And we're going to agree to dates, we'll develop that schedule with the team as a whole, with the city, with our architects, with all the consultants. And then, once we have those dates set, we hold them accountable.
Gotcha.
Here's a deliverable, when do we expect it, and let's make sure we make that happen so that we can manage the process as efficiently and economically as we can. And the design teams like that, because we're going to drive decisions, we're going to, you know, drive the project forward and not, not a lot of waiting around trying to get an answer.
Well, I appreciate that, I'm, I'm getting schooled on project timeliness, working with the square design team and also with our square projects up there, so I'm getting enough information to be dangerous with my questions, so. I appreciate that, thank you.
You bet.
Anyone else? Please proceed.
Just for curiosity, on those kinds of projects, are there typically penalties for not performing in the timeframe?
Help me with that again.
You talked about performance timeframes, you know, are there penalties if, if they don't complete it in a certain timeframe?
Yes, normally, it is called liquidated damages. We'll, we'll have liquidated damages in the construction contract, so there aren't penalties against us or the design teams, but if we run long, you know, that's money out of our pocket, basically, because we're agreeing to a lump sum amount upfront. But with the contractors, we would recommend, and we still need to talk about delivery approach and how we're going to hire the contractors, and there's some of that that still needs to filter through. But typically, there's a liquidated damage clause that says every day you're late past substantial completion, and that's beneficial use and occupancy, is what they call it. So you can move in and use the building, every day you're late, it's so much a day.
Gotcha.
And you set that amount based on kind of your financial loss through that process. All, all legal and happens all the time. But we make darn sure we don't have to enforce it.
Good, thank you.
Anyone else other questions? Anybody else? Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager, anything to wrap up on that one or any closing comments?
I would just remind the, for the public's benefit, these two items that you just heard your presentations on are on your agenda Monday night, the fifteenth, for the council's consideration.
Thank you very much.
If I could ask, Mr. City Manager, if you, could you just give us a, not, not right at the moment, but maybe send us an email or something with just current balances of those funds that will be appropriated, and that these would be coming from, so that we know exactly the current funding levels?
Be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Anyone else other further questions? Okay.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay. The CIP program is next, so do you want to give us kind of a update on that, Mr. City Manager?
I'm going to jump right into it to keep the show moving along for you. Our budget manager, Melissa Sill, is here to give that presentation for you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. Let's see if I can do this twice. Might have to have Steve help me, it's not presenting yet. Sorry. I can't get it into the presentation mode.
Sorry.
Thank you. All right, so I'm going to move through this pretty quickly, so if you have any questions, please just stop me along the way, or I'll answer them at the end. Essentially, the City of Independence prepares a CIP plan every year. We look six years out into the future, and so what I'm presenting tonight won't necessarily be what you'll see in the budget. So as we're going through the process determining what funds we have available for CIP projects, that will be updated and then presented to you overall in the budget. Just as a reminder, our capital improvements are projects or equipment that cost over a hundred thousand dollars per item and then have a useful life of one year or more. Just real quick, the CIP calendar, this might seem counterintuitive, but we actually start on CIP before we start with any of the other budget process. We determine what our needs are for the next year and going out six years. And then as we're, you know, going through creating the operating budget, then we know what we can actually fund in any given year in CIP projects. So this is the six-year plan that we've come up with. You'll notice that the grand total over six years is five hundred and twenty-six million dollars. That does include all of the items that have been identified as part of the geo bond. So at that, at this point, you know, you will see funded items, you'll see items that, that have been identified as having grant opportunities, but then we'll also see some items that are unfunded and won't be funded unless we have the geo bond that is approved by voters or if we are able to find other funding sources for those. And this is exactly what this shows, so you can see any number of grants. There are some general fund requested projects. General fund for the past, I believe, three years has not funded any CIP, so that's something that we're currently looking at as we're trying to balance. And then you can see each of the sales taxes and the utility funds that will be funding projects. So one of the things that we looked at this year as we were going through our projects is we had departments identify the estimated service life of the projects and equipment that they're proposing replacing. So you can see by and large, over the six years, that most of the items that we're replacing have already exceeded or will exceed their estimated service life. And then we have about another half or so that will be at fifty to one hundred percent at the time that they are replaced. The, the bottom there that you see that are estimated to be less than fifty percent. estimated to be less than 50%, for the most part, those are going to be new items, new projects that are not being replaced. Another item, or another way that we looked at our CIP projects this year, portion of population that are benefiting from the project. So you'll see that, for the most part, of the 526 million, 433 million of that would be benefiting a majority of the population. So there are, of course, some smaller projects that might be affecting smaller areas, neighborhoods, primarily. So, you know, just because it's benefiting a smaller portion of the population, it doesn't mean that it's any less worthy of a project. It's just a different way to look at it. We also identified projects that have recovery cost. So the items that you see, yes, there are either user fees, which are unlikely, but potentially, you know, exist to, you know, to go help replace equipment or infrastructure. But for the most part, there are a lot of projects that just don't have any any type of recovery. Again, not anything that maybe isn't something that we should be doing. Maybe it's in a sales tax. There's just no identified revenue stream specifically for those projects. And I think this is the last one, but we also looked at risk mitigation and resilience because this is also another important part of a CIP plan is what does it do for the resilience of the city, you know, when it comes to natural disasters or just ensuring that continuity surfaces occurs throughout the years. Then, obviously, risk mitigation would be improving public safety. So the last area that we looked at, this is a little bit different, but this is alignment to the strategic plan. And so this is taking the different items that council has identified in the strategic plan. Departments are actually in charge of this, reading it back to that strategic plan. So that's where we come up with a list from least aligned to most aligned. The one thing that I did not point out on this or bring out is sometimes these projects might be least aligned with our strategic plan, but they could very well be something that we're mandated to do. You know, Department of Natural Resources, federal government, that type of thing that even though it might not appear to go directly to what we have, what we want to do, we have to do it regardless. So for 2020, I'm sorry, let's just say 2024 to 2025, these are the projects that are broken out. I'll note on the fire department, they have front-loaded all of their costs. So if they get through the design process and start moving forward, this is what they're estimating the cost of constructing their new buildings. And then they do have some equipment purchases in there. Municipal services, you can see about 33 million budgeted next year, Park 655, Police 550, Power and Light, about 17.8 million, and Technology Services doesn't have anything budgeted for next year, but they do in the following year. So on the fire department, excuse me, I wanted to give you this breakdown. So the 1.975 next year is for pumper and fire apparatus. The 27.5 million is for their building and replacement of fire stations. And 300,000 in capital maintenance there is for a parking lot at one of their fire stations where they've had some public safety issues for their fire, for their employees. So they're looking at making some upgrades to that parking lot. So with the expense of those buildings on there next year, they are making up 36.2 of the proposed CIP expenditures. Municipal services constitutes 40.7% of CIP expenditures next year. And, excuse me, I've got two pages here worth of projects. So again, these will be in the budget so that you're able to see them better. And they're also in the CIP document if you want to see a breakdown and description of each of these projects.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Just for the people listening who may not live and breathe the city function all the time, can you just give them rough? Everybody understands fire, but they don't necessarily understand what sits underneath municipal services.
Sure. So municipal services right now, they do, they have streets, sanitary sewer, and water also merged with them this year. So they have a significant array of projects that they're working on. And I'm sorry, I'm thinking stormwater as well. So there are multiple projects they're working on. You can see sidewalks program, bridge program, complete streets, detention basins, neighborhood projects. There's a Spring Branch Garage Complex. So they deal with a wide variety of projects. Parks, Rec, and Tourism. So you can see 475,000 in capital equipment replacement and another 180,000 in capital improvements. So we're looking at parking lot overlays, a pedestrian bridge at Rock Creek Trail. They have proposed a new trash truck that would actually be split across a couple of different funds. And then they have a renovation to the Rotary Park Playground. Police is probably the smallest at this point on this slide. They are 0.7% of CIP expenditures next year that are proposed. And that $550,000 is for a new Bearcat. Power and Light, so they've got 3.6 million for a on their capital equipment replacement, about 13.7 million in capital improvements, and 440,000 in capital maintenance. And you can see all their projects listed out there as well. So what's not getting done, and this is, you'll notice that number that under that grand total, the 249, 568, 672, these are projects that are identified as part of the GO bond that currently there's not funding for these to move forward. And this would be how the, you know, the breakdown of those funds would would go. So you've got about 8.9 million in capital equipment replacement, 122 million in true capital improvements, and then 118 million in capital maintenance. So all of those things and a crossover from what we just heard from ETC Institute, you know, these would cover things like facilities, street maintenance, sidewalk connectivity, stormwater, playground maintenance, park maintenance, and water main replacements. On the facilities, you can see there's that Justice Center campus, $5 million for the animal shelter, 75 million for a recreation facility, 3 million in the public building maintenance, and 10 million for historic sites. Just keep in mind that these would, you know, start taking place after the GO bond passes and then would happen for the next, you know, five years or so in the foreseeable future. So some of those other items that were identified by citizens, we've got four bridges that are currently closed. GO bond would include about 4.4 million for that, plus another $7 million in bridge repairs, $60 million for the 365 lane miles that need to be overlaid, 20 million for curb and sidewalk installation, and then about 3.5 million for stormwater. Parks and Recreation, you can see they have a variety of different, you know, different items that would be addressed as well. And then, just based off the presentation that that was given last year, even with the $250 million investment from the GO bond, it still touches about a quarter of the projects that we have identified that that probably need to happen in the city. And that's the presentation.
Very good. Thank you, Melissa. Any questions? Any questions?
If you want to see what it takes to run a city, spend a little time and read that CIP plan. I mean, it's like 90 pages long, and it just goes through all the stuff you have to invest in to be able to keep a city running. And it's easy to, you know, think your city ends at the end of your driveway, but there is just so much infrastructure. It is quite an education to spend a little time with that. Thanks for your presentation. You guys do wonderful work with not as much money as you need. So we appreciate that.
Anyone else? Other comments, questions? Okay. Melissa, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. City Manager, any follow-up on any of that?
Just to let the council know, as we start to move into the season where we submit the budget and the council deliberates it, the CIP is an important part of the budget. This has been submitted to the Planning Commission as required by the charter. They've done tremendous work reviewing it, asking questions of the departments that compiled it, and have recommended their approval to the council. So this, what you saw here will be included in the submitted budget to the city council.
Anyone else other questions? Okay. And I think Melissa's going to do the financial update. Is that right?
No, I'm going to give her a break.
Okay, you're going to do it?
Yep.
All right. I just saw her getting it ready. So she's a servant.
Might have to have Steve come back out. I'm not sure that I can get it up. Hey, Steve, can you come back out, please?
What would it take to get Steve a console right here to be in the budget so he could command center right here?
I tried. It's so heavy.
I'm just glad the Royals didn't have a home game tonight, Steve. Steve works at the Royals part-time, for those that didn't know. Okay, well, I am Zach Walker, the city manager, and it's kind of become a practice of ours the last several years. The month before we submit the budget to the council to provide you with a general framework of some of the issues broadly that are impacting the budget and primarily focused on the general fund, since that's obviously the fund that's got the most competition for resources in it. So this will be very much heavily focused on the general fund. And again, through the lens of some of the issues that are impacting the development of the fiscal year 2425 budget. So as the council knows, the general fund budget is largely dependent on sales tax and independence. So we wanted to give you a glance at that. On the left-hand side of this presentation where it says receipt totals, for those that don't know, the city books our our sales tax revenue the month after it would be remitted by a consumer. So if you paid sales tax at a store in December, we as a city don't collect that and recognize it until January, a month later. So for the 12-month period ending December of 2023, you can see that sales tax collections at the city are actually down about 3% over that period last year.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, sir.
I don't think we're up to speed with you. Are we?
Oh, good. All right, we're going to try it again. As I was saying a minute ago, on the left-hand side of the screen, the city collects our revenues that are paid by a consumer a month after they were paid. So if you paid in December, it's actually January that the city recognizes and books that as revenues. For the 12-month period that ended December of 2023, actually shows that we're down about 3% on our sales tax collections here at the city. However, to get a truer sense of where sales tax is actually coming, we annualize that in that middle column that says growth, which shows a truer month-to-month comparison. So December of '23 compared to that period a year ago was actually some growth there of about 3%. A little bit more encouraging. What is a little less encouraging here is that, for the first time in a 10-month period, our annual growth rate in the economy is behind our Midwest CPI. Now, they're close, 3.2% to 3.1. That might be reason for a little bit of concern, but the reason I'm not completely concerned about that yet is those months right there, November and December, are obviously busy holiday shopping months. What we might be seeing there is a shift to more online sales, people doing their holiday shopping on Amazon and Cyber Monday and all of those things. So we'll know a little bit more once our January and February sales tax revenues come in. But just as you're heading into budget, know, sales tax revenue, while still on par with the Midwest CPI, isn't as strong as it was and and shows a little bit of slowing in the economy. That leads into our general fund balance forecast. And this picture, you know, while not great, over the last several years, we've been able to do enough with our budget to continue to push out some of the challenges that we're facing. So a few years ago, we were showing by this coming fiscal year that we would be depleting our fund balance reserve in the general fund because of some of the structural budget changes and other one-time things we've been able to do. We continue to push those challenges out. We're not yet at a point where we're hitting our 16% percent reserve fund here, but we're trending in the right direction. I should also mention that this picture does illustrate or reflect that if we did not make any budget changes year to year and we just relied upon our fund balance, that is where you would see that decline. That's not something I would recommend. I would recommend we continue to build our reserves year to year. So this is a worst-case scenario picture for you. I'll talk now just a little bit about how the general fund is ending the current fiscal year. You can see we budgeted the general fund expenditures at 78 million. We are actually projected to finish the year right around $82 million. That increase right there can largely be attributed to overtime expenses, particularly in public safety with some of the shorting staffages that we've had there. That has necessitated us using more overtime to cover those vacancies and those shortfalls there. So that that's what's driving that. I'll point out to you here, you'll can see it on the chart, that public safety is about 78% of the general fund budget, but that's not all that surprising, given that 80% of our headcount in the general fund is in the public safety budget. So pretty much reflective of of where those personnel are at in the general fund is where those expenses are at as well. Speaking of those expenditures there, this gives you just a quick look at expenditures for the general fund in the current year. As you can see, largely, again, salary benefits, all the personnel costs, overtime and insurance, all of those things. Because of the increase in budget this year, I am not as confident that we are going to hit our 16% reserve this year like we thought we were. We're still going to add to fund balance this year by over $1 million. Currently looking like we'll add about $1.4 million, which will get us somewhere around 14% for a reserve balance, but not on track to around fourteen percent for a reserve balance, but not on track to hit sixteen percent like we were forecasting earlier in the year, again, largely because of these overtime expenses in, in public safety. So now I'm going to talk just about, again, some of the, the tougher issues in the budget each year, things that are, you know, cost drivers. These are costs that we have incurred or that we continue to incur, and we need to navigate around these boulders as we're trying to address the priorities that you saw in your citizen survey just a little bit ago. Big one for us each year is loggers. For those watching that don't know, that's our public employee pension system or retirement fund. Independence is one of many cities statewide that participate in this program for public employee retirement. We have a defined benefit plan here at the city, which pays out our retirees a defined amount, which is why it's called a defined plan, based on their years of service, their salary, and then our multiplier of the program that we participate in here at the city. A lot of the costs, I talked to you a minute ago, that we are incurring today, overtime, particularly in police department, those are grant-funded, so we don't necessarily incur those today, but where it, it does show up on our balance sheet is long-term in our pension system here, because again, that is a product of your annual salary in, in your career. I'm oversimplifying that, but largely, it's a reflective of your annual salary during your career at the city. So that's where we have to sort of be cognizant about what those costs are, because they show up in our long-term commitments, long-term for the city. So I'll talk just a little bit more about what's driving that. As I mentioned, overtime here is, is an important cost here. I'll, I'll show you headcount here in just a few more minutes, but again, contracted raises for our workforce combined with overtime is what drives those loggers' costs in, in part. Also, driving that is what's known as other pays. That term largely applies to our, our fire department. This is a contractual obligation that we have here at the city, so, you know, it, it's a, a pay that we contribute to our men and women in the department based on their bargaining agreement, but that is when minimum staffing, number, minimum number of people working in the department on each shift, standby pay for people that have to be on call in case they need to come in, and then, of course, people who are ordered in to work. All of these part of what it takes to run a fire department, but again, I just want you to know that those are some of the costs of what it takes to provide public safety services here in our city. Where, where I want to kind of try to make this make a little more sense, and this is not personalized at all, it's just to try to help you as a governing body understand these implications of how these pieces fit together. This is an example that we have sanitized of, of an employee that works in our fire department. You can see in their three-year wages, if they just work their normal working hours, their three-year wages would total about two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars, or an annual salary of roughly eighty-two hundred dollars. But if that person starts taking on a bunch of overtime shifts, particularly in the latter part of their career, where that logger's calculation comes in, this person's annual salary is going to jump from eighty-two hundred dollars to seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars, and the three-year wage total from two-ninety-five up to six-hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars. So we not only have then that upfront expense of, for this individual, but then the logger's contribution. That's just one example there, but wanted to show you how that impacts the budget and the issues that we, we have to try to circumnavigate there. I wanted to show this, you know, we were asked earlier about how does our cost for different city services compare to some of our other cities. This is just a microcosm of that. This is per capita for our police and fire department. Again, my point here is just showing it's expensive to run a police and fire department. Those are, those are big issues. So like, when you see in the citizen survey frustrations with code enforcement, you know, those are issues that are competing with what it costs to run a police and fire department, and you can see, you know, in a lot of these cities, the per capita amount for both police and fire are, are, you know, well over two-hundred dollars each. It's, it's expensive to run a public safety unit, is the message here. Personnel service costs in the general fund, these, you know, you got to have people to do the job, to provide the services, but again, I think our community and our council should know that personnel costs are a real part of our budget. Just with health and dental benefits, as well as the retiree health insurance obligation we have, those three items command twenty percent of your general fund budget right off the top. So again, it's expensive to run a city. Other post-employment benefits, I know this is not twenty-eight-point font, Mayor, so please forgive me there, but the message I want the council to, to get from this slide is that with our OPEB or other post-employment benefits, we actually declined in the last year, which I would attribute, again, to some of the reforms and changes we have made in our health insurance plan with our partners in our logger's group. So that number declined from one-hundred-and-seventy-nine million to one-hundred-and-seventy-five million, still a lot, but it's gone down by about four million dollars in the, pardon me, four hundred million dollars in the last year. So we're headed the right direction. Next, I want to talk about transit, just very quickly. This is a big part of the budget every year. As I've mentioned before, our federal funding through ARPA has expired, so we will now have to subsidize this program out of our general fund dollars. I can tell you our community development staff is working very closely with the Kansas City Area Transit Authority to figure out how to design a plan that both fits within our existing resources, but provides the greatest service to the greatest number, and gets folks where they really are, by data, where they're circulating and moving to in the city. But just know, again, that this is back to being a very heavily subsidized service in the city's general fund budget. So I'll conclude by saying there's not any one solution. As I say every year, we've got to push on continued revenue growth in our city while also trying to look to control our expenses at a manageable pace. I continue to advocate that simply cutting our way to prosperity is not a solution. We have to, you know, continue to use our priority-based budgeting model, our data that we're getting, like through the citizen survey and other information, to make sure we're allocating resources from lower priority programs to those that we're either hearing or seeing have a demand or a need associated with them, and also making sure that we continue to find those structural budget fixes and not those one-time gimmicks that only buy you a year's worth of time. So we will continue to frame the budget development through that lens. We will bring you a budget that tries to address as many of the priorities that you've laid out in your action plan as we can, but hope this gives you a better sense of some of the challenges that we are seeing as staff as we put that budget together. With that, I'm happy to answer questions you may have.
Anyone any questions? Anyone? Did you? Nope. Go ahead, councilmember.
So, Mr. City Manager, are there mechanisms that we can use to address the overtime? I know that we made some changes, some structural changes, that have made some improvement, but that's not sustainable to run on, on overtime like that. I'm, and this is a perpetual problem, so I'm just looking for your thoughts and advice on how we make improvements there.
One big thing that is out of our control is the plan that we are in, the system that we are in. It is a, I, I kind of skimmed over that, but I'll go into more detail to answer your question. Our retirement plan is based on your three highest earning years in your last ten years of service, and then multiplied by your years of service, and the multiplier of the plan that the city participates in. That issue of the three highest earning years in your last ten years is, I will be honest, is a challenge. It, it incentivizes people to, you know, find different ways to increase their salary, whether it's working overtime or other mechanisms, all within the rules, but it's, it's a challenge because it artificially inflates your salary in those last few years of service. That's, that's outside of our control, unless there is a, a change at the statewide level on that. Internally, making sure we do everything we can to staff our organization appropriately, because when you have vacancies, that's when it necessitates overtime for people to come in and fill those spots, and then just looking at our policies, procedures, agreements, et cetera, to make sure that those are as balanced as possible.
And when we receive a grant from an outside agency, they're only covering the salary portion, so if we get a grant from the feds to do DUI screening or whatever, we still have to pay the additional on the logger's side? Is, do I understand that correctly?
You do, you do. We bear the long-term cost, the upfront, the working, the special assignment, or doing the, the task associated with the grant, that, that is, cost is funded by the grant. But the time that you incurred, the cost that you incurred to do that, goes into your annual salary, which is then reported to loggers, and that is what factors into your final payout, your defined benefit at the time that you retire from the city.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Other questions, comments? Please proceed.
Ms. Walker, regarding the, the grant impact that you were just talking about, and the impact on loggers, is it possible on most grants to, you know, hold a piece of that and bank it for a future, you know, future retirement expenses that, that were going to be?
Usually not. Usually, these grants are written very specifically about an activity that the grant tour is asking you to perform, so there's some sort of outcome that they want to see, that's why they've awarded you the grant, and they are paying for that activity at that moment in time.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted to check.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anyone else? Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, with some of those grants, especially those federal grants, is, is there's no mechanism, funding source that can help us with those prolonged, extended funding sources that you can think of?
Not that we've found, no.
Any way to double-check, just?
We, we can absolutely double-check. Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure there's not a missing opportunity out there.
Then my, my second one is for personnel costs, for PD, but not even just for PD, but for our professional services, like our traffic engineers, those that have a needed degree and certain credentials, that market pool is tough, getting those people to, to bring them into the municipal sector to do that type of work. PD specifically, talking with the FOP leadership, yourself, command staff leadership, Kansas City very specifically, has gotten tremendously aggressive with their base pre, base pay, as well as their shrinking of their longevity pay as their top out, which is something that we're going to have to look at and contend with at, at some point where appropriate to keep the level of service in, in our police personnel here. I mean, these are things that are outside forces that are pushing, that we have to keep an eye on, so that, that market demand and pull is something that we can't always reflect. I didn't, I didn't necessarily see this coming a year ago, that Kansas City would move this aggressively.
Yeah, and just, I, I know you know this councilmember, but for, for everyone's benefit watching, Kansas City's Police Department has gotten somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred vacancies. I'd remind everybody that the Kansas City Police Department is actually overseen by the state of Missouri. So one of the recent changes that the General Assembly enacted was lifting the residency requirement to work for Kansas City Police Department, so that really took away a competitive advantage that we had. You know, folks, if they wanted to go work for KCPD, at least had to be thoughtful about, did they want to move into the city? That's no longer an issue, holding somebody back from making that decision. And then, a recent change to the collective bargaining agreement has really accelerated both the wages, as well as what's known as the steps, so to work your way towards the highest pay within each of the job classifications in that agreement. They are moving very aggressively to try to shore up those four hundred vacancies. I think we've all seen the news stories about criminal activity in Kansas City, and they are being very aggressive to try to fill those vacancies, and Independence and the other municipalities around are going to certainly be competing against that, and, and going to have to be cognizant of that.
Our public safety folks, regionally, nationally, they deserve all the money that, for the job that they do. My heart here is with IPD, so trying to keep them and working with that leadership, I know we're in negotiations there with that, because those are, those are lateral transfers that Kansas City is trying to get. They're trying to get our skilled officers to move over there so they have less time to train them, to get them on the street, and keep them away from us, so what we can do to be aggressive to, to help with that, and financially appropriate, of course.
Agree.
Anyone else? Other discussion, or questions, comments, concerns? Okay.
One, one last question.
Please.
I know you have the unenviable job of coming up with a balanced budget. I, I really, really do worry about transit. The, while lots of people don't use public transit, the people who do are desperately reliant on public transit, and we have to maintain the ability for people to get to the grocery store and get to work, so I know that's going to require incredible creativity. I appreciate that you've started early to work with our partners at KCATA. The solution may not be ideal, but we still have to figure out a way to maintain that for the people who really rely on it.
I, I couldn't agree more. There's several reasons you listed and others, including making it to medical appointments. This is the lifeline for many people to the world. We, we take it for granted, many of us, our ability to hop in the car and go anywhere we want. Yeah, a lot of our residents need this, and that's not lost on me or our staff, and we, we are working very aggressively with the ATA to find a, a system, routes, service options, that make sure we don't isolate members of our community who can't, for other reasons, be connected.
Thank you. Anyone else? Other further discussions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you.
That takes us to our next one. You're probably going to do something on that, too, aren't you? In the Board's Commissions Reports?
That is actually the city clerk, and it doesn't require Steve's help.
Okay. At least yet.
A recommendation has been made to reappoint Ronald Brew to the Jackson County Board of Equalization. Staff request direction to add a resolution to the next regular meeting, reappointing this individual to the above board. A recommendation has been made to reappoint Robert Pruente to the Heritage Commission. Staff request direction to add a resolution to the next regular meeting, reappointing this individual to the above board. And a recommendation has been made to reappoint Brent Shondelmeyer to the Land Trust of Jackson County. Staff request direction to add a resolution on the next regular agenda meeting, reappointing this individual to the above board.
Thank you. And, Mr. City Manager, another question with regards to Jackson County and the assessment, and I know you wanted to talk about that in great detail even further, but putting Mr. Brew on the Board of Equalization, if I understand it correctly, and I don't know if you've been privy to this if I understand it correctly, and I don't know if you've been privy to this conversation, they haven't been paying the Board of Equalization because they can't get the funding through Jackson County Legislature, if I'm correct?
That is my understanding, as I've heard. I have not personally confirmed that, but that's the understanding of what I've heard.
So even though we appoint Mr. Brew to this, and he gets approved by the council, obviously, it's their decision, but in the meantime, they may or may not be meeting because the Board of Equalization is not meeting because they're not being funded by the Jackson County Legislature.
That may be an issue.
So that's, if you know anyone in the legislature, my colleagues, citizens, please encourage them to get the funding going so that we can actually have the Board of Equalization and deal with the assessments appropriately. So that's my thought on that. If you could, please, I would be grateful. That puts you in a unique situation, being elected official here and then working for the county. Yep. Very, very good. Mr. City Manager, I need to ask this question from a sense of protocol and see your recommendation on this. We always have the study session from a council item. The item with regards to the ARCH program and that city council member who's presented that, their last meeting is next Monday. It was scheduled to be somewhere later in April. We'll need the indulgence of probably four members of this body to say that item could be on for next Monday in order to allow that council member to be at that meeting to propose their idea.
Yeah, we, that, you're correct. The council would need to suspend your rules to allow an item to be added to the agenda for April 15th, because we are past the deadline per your rules of procedure for publishing that agenda. So if you would like to take that up while that member is still seated, then tonight would be the time to suspend your rules and direct us to add that to the April 15th agenda.
Okay. And my concern with that, and this is to Mr. Kovar, we typically don't take votes here, but in this scenario, what's your recommendation from a following our rules perspective?
Your rules allow for you to take votes, specifically to add items to a meeting agenda. So that wouldn't be an issue for this situation.
So we could, we could actually have someone make that motion, get a second, then take a vote tonight to put that on the next Monday's agenda?
Correct.
If I'm hearing you correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. Any thoughts on that?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion to bring this item forward for the next city council agenda.
Okay. Got a motion, got a second? Any discussion?
Just a, more of a comment than a question. I'm really unsure that I'm in favor of putting that on, you know, on a special, on the agenda at any time, not just before that. Not just before we change council, but mostly because I just think that as part of the budget process would be the right time to take a look at this. So I'm not sure I'm really in favor of that.
Anyone else? Other discussion?
I'm with Councilmember Fears that it would make more sense to refer it back to the city manager for him to look at his comprehensive budget to bring a recommendation forward.
Any other further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on suspending the rules to put this item on next Monday's agenda. If I'm understanding it correctly, if everybody's, are we on the same, him on the same page here? Okay. Very good. With that being said, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
No.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
No.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, but the item would need four to pass, so, and it fails from a lack of getting four votes. So with that being said, anything else?
Mayor, for that item, because of what it is, it only takes a majority of who's here.
Okay.
So it does, so it does pass with three, with three votes, that passes.
Okay, because we've got five here from the perspective.
Yes, correct.
All right. I didn't understand that, so thank you very much. So I will declare that item is passed, and it will be on the agenda for Monday. Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Other things for rep? All right. Thank you all very much. We'll conclude the study session.